Yes, Madam Chair, Ms. Burns. President, Ms. Cooper. Here, Ms. Dooley.
Here.
Mr. Morse.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
And Ms. Gibson. Ms. Torres.
Yes, thank you.
May I have a motion for approval over opposed to John.
Who's that be?
All of the members who say yes. But who's whoever.
Well, we're going to get started, but first, I have more discussion. This is our elementary voting update. We do have Karen Jackson is online and she will be, um, she will drive our presentations. Um, and Karen is in this, we can, Ohio, Ohio, because she is in our time. And you argued it, uh, Karen.
All right. Oh, I am able to share my screen. I was wondering if that was going to be the case or not. Let me check where this comes from. And we will get started. All right. Can everyone hear me okay? I can see if you just shake your head. Perfect. Okay. Well, thanks for having me this morning. Um, I'm excited to be here virtually to share some updates with you about what we've heard so far. About our options. So. The first thing I want to do is go over the process again. A lot of the questions that we have received have been about the overall process and how things are going to kind of shake out. So I just want to do a quick review of that and then we'll get into, um, some of the survey results and then some of our other frequently asked questions that I just want to cover. This morning.
Karen.
Mm-hmm.
I was just, um, if the board members have questions as you're going through the presentation, if it's hard, you just get those questions, but we don't have to do all of that.
Okay. Yeah, I don't mind if you, uh, if you interrupt me either.
Yeah, so we get the questions over and over.
Mm-hmm. No problem. All right. So for our process overview. This is our overall, um, rezoning process kind of layout. Um, I do have a slide for each of these, so I'm going to kind of breeze past the sky. All right. So we started off the process with a plan for planning meeting. Um, really, this is was an organizational meeting to get us prepared for the process and kind of nailed down the timeline and things like that. We next took a deep dive into the current state of the schools. So we reviewed various data sets related to this process. Um, I do have slides specifically about this within the presentation for the, um, oopsies. Uh, for the options. So I'm not going to go through the background data sets. If you're interested in kind of the data that we use to pull together to inform this process, it is available on the project website for you. I think I skipped a slide there. My apologies. This is, I'm on a weird screen here. Okay. So we next met with the rezoning committee, which is made up of school and community stakeholders. They're geographically diverse. We have representatives from every school on our committee. Um, and they assisted with the office creation as well as utilize those key considerations to guide that options creation. The options, the four option that we, that we have presented for feedback, they are options that the committee, uh, created with my help. Um, so we did, we. I did not make those in a silo. We did have community members assisting with those options. We then took those options back to the staff work group for rezoning and we decided which options would move forward. Um, I believe we started out with seven or eight different options and we narrowed those down to just the four that you're seeing today as a part of our community feedback sessions. We then took the options to the community. Um, and this is kind of the step that we're currently in. We are still collecting feedback. To date, we have received four hundred and thirty-nine surveys. Beyond that, we've also received multiple emails from folks asking questions and providing feedback. Um, and we have, we've also been meeting with folks and I do have a slide about all of our engagements later on. So once we get the feedback from the community and everything is compiled into a report, we'll then take that back to the rezoning committee to make modifications. Um, so the modifications that you're going to see are going to be based on both those key criteria for rezoning as well as the, um, the community feedback that we receive. Um, once we get the feedback compiled, like I said earlier, it will be available on the project website so that you can go in and see exactly what everybody said about each option. Um, just so you know, if, we encourage people not to put any personal information within the survey, but if they do, we do take that out ahead of any, um, public report. A lot of times people will put, um, comments like, my son Johnny, who lives at one, two, three Main Street, wants to stay at their current school or something like that, and we just don't like having, um, that identifying information public. So anything that is redacted from that report is just that, uh, personal information that we don't want to get out there. So once we meet with the rezoning committee again and come up with a recommendation, we'll then have a public hearing that goes over the recommendation. During the public hearing, we're going to highlight every area of change and when it will be changing. Um, and we're going to ask the community for an additional set of feedback about the recommendation from that. Um, there will be opportunities to, uh, make public hearing comments, both virtually and in person for that. Once we have done that public hearing, we'll compile all of the feedback that we received into a report, give that to the board so that they can be informed in their decision. Um, so that, that is our last step of the process, that implementation. Uh, will, the school locator will be available for the next couple of years, just because you are going to be implementing, um, the boundaries over the next couple of years. Uh, so that'll be available as, as well as the project website. That'll also be available for folks to review. If next year they're like, oh, I, I wonder why we made this decision, that, that project website will be available moving forward. So moving on to our survey results, this is the more exciting part of this presentation. First up, this slide just shows all four of our options. Um, you can see there, they solve the problem differently. They do have different varying levels of, um, like going along with those key considerations for rezoning. We have had some really interesting, um, comments that we've seen of people comparing those key considerations for rezoning to the options. And if more of those want to come through, like, keep it up. Uh, that's really great information for us. All right. Moving on to our preliminary survey results, these are the survey results as of Monday of this week, so December second. Um, we did have to submit the presentation ahead of time, which is why everything was pulled on the second. So there have been probably twenty more responses that have come in since the second, but this is based on what we had heard as of Monday. So in looking at those who are responding, we've received the most feedback from those who are affiliated with Burnley Moran Elementary School. Um, not surprising that Locus Grove neighborhood is really where we're getting the majority of our feedback and I'll, I'll show you a map later of, um, where we have been hearing feedback from. We're also getting feedback from the majority of our elementary school parents. Um, if you look at the second, the second table over here, this, we've received over two hundred and fifty responses from parents or guardians of elementary students, and then it kind of tapers off from there. Uh, not surprising, we're, we're adjusting the elementary level. So that's, that's who I absolutely expected to hear the most from. All right. So this next slide just goes over what we have heard so far and kind of the results as of today. So the chart on the left is showing the level of support that we have received from each option. Please, please, please keep in mind that when we are doing this work, the comments are, will be more highly considered when determining that recommendation than the overall level of support. Uh, you as the board are actually the only group that gets a vote in this whole process. Um, the community, this is, the level of support is not a vote. It's meant to gauge. Um, it is meant to gauge the support, but it is not everything. So those comments are going to be the most important piece when determining that recommendation. Um, also, a lot of this level of support information is driven by who we have received the most information from or the most responses from. Um, something else to note, the survey will be open through the end of December. So if you have not had a chance to respond, please consider responding, even if you're not impacted by this process. Um, this is a community-driven process and we want to hear from the whole community, not just those who are impacted. So just a summary of what we've heard from each option. For option one, there were, there are some concerns about the number of students moving and the reduced walkability. There are concerns about specific neighborhoods moving, um, especially related to that walkability and proximity piece. And there are concerns with the imbalanced diversity metrics among schools. For option two, we've heard that there is support for better balancing diversity among schools. Um, there are concerns about specific neighborhoods moving, again, related to that walkability and proximity piece. Option three, there is a lot of support for that walkability. Um, there are concerns about the imbalance diversity metrics and, option three, there's also a lot of support for fewer students being moved. Option four, again, just like with option three, there's a lot of support for moving the fewest students. Um, there is support for the walkability on option four, and then again, we're seeing a lot of concerns about the higher socioeconomic and English as a second language rates at Summit Elementary School. So the map on the left and on the right is actually showing the same information. Um, so on the left, we have our density of where we have received responses from so far. Um, like I mentioned before, this area just north of two fifty near Burnley Moran, um, it encompasses some of the Locus Grove neighborhood is where we have received the most responses from so far. That being said, I don't want that to wash out the other responses that we have, that we've heard. Um, if you look at the map on the right, this is actually showing the locations of where we have received results so far, and you can tell. While this, um, well, the neighborhood just north of Burnley Moran is like our highest density for responses. We are receiving responses from, um, the rest of the division as well, which is awesome news. Um, there are some areas that are highly impacted in this that, I was, I was pretty concerned before polling this data that we weren't going to hear information or we weren't going to hear feedback from. But I think a lot of those engagements, the additional engagements that the division has been doing with these communities has really helped to draw some of this feedback from these areas. Um, so, so far, I'm, I'm very pleased with where we have gotten the feedback from and how much feedback we've gotten. I, I really hope that we can, we can get more by the end of the month, but I'm, I'm happy with the response rate and where we're getting the feedback from as of today. So along with the initial three, um, engagements that we had at Greenbrier, Jackson Via and Summit, the division has also been holding, um, community-specific, engagements for a few different areas that again are impacted within this process. Um, so the top area just shows the past engagements we had, again, those, at those three elementary schools, they, there was also an engagement on November eighteenth at Kendallwood, um, and another on December third at the Carlson Avenue Mobile Home Park. Looking forward, we do have another one of these scheduled on December eleventh at the Mountain View Mobile Home Park, um, and December twelfth at the Greenstone Community Center. Um, while these are meant to get feedback from these communities, they're certainly open. So if anybody watching this wants to attend, please feel free to, um, we're, we're not going to turn anybody away, especially if you have questions and feedback that you'd like to share with us. Um, the map on the left here does show the locations of each of the engagements, um, that we've had. So you can see the most highly impacted areas, uh, specifically Jackson Via and Summit Elementary are receiving the most, uh, additional engagements just because, again, these are the areas that are kind of driving this process. Um, these are the areas that are going to be tightest if we, if we don't make any changes at all. So I do want to just go through some of the questions we've been hearing because we've started hearing very similar questions and I just want to make, I just want to clear some things up for folks. Um, hopefully we have, we have some people watching this meeting and they can, their questions will be answered during this. So the first question we have received, or I would say the biggest question we've actually received has been about housing developments. Um, so I just want to explain how we got our information and how we're kind of moving that forward. So we have worked with the Department of Neighborhood Services with the City of Charlottesville, um, CRHA, the Piedmont Housing Alliance, and then POAH, whose, uh, name is escaping me. Um, but we have worked with each of those entities to determine what developments are going to come online within the next probably ten or so years. Um, with that, we do have very clear timelines, especially from our affordable housing partners. Um, they were able to give us some pretty clear timelines, which is great because those are the developments that are likely going to produce the most students for us. Um, the city's, information, we don't have as clear of timelines on those, but we should be able to get some of, get some of them figured out within the near future. Um, the student output that you're seeing with all, within all of our options are, were calculated using the student yields below. Um, so in this chart here, you can see this is the number of students divided by number of housing units. These are the ratios that we applied to each of the developments, um, to determine the number of students that we can expect from each one. Um, these yields were developed by Walden Cooper last year, so they, they should be pretty current. Um, typically when we look at student yields, they, they really don't fluctuate that much from year to year. Uh, over like a ten-year span they can, but year after year, we don't usually see in many divisions much change at all. Um, we also applied weights to some of the developments that were not likely to come to fruition according to the city. Um, there have been some developments that have been on the docket for, ten plus years that have not developed yet. Um, so these are the, these are the developments that the city flagged for us and said, no, this is not likely to happen anytime soon, if at all. Um, if something was weighted like twenty-five percent, so it's twenty-five percent likely to come to fruition, we applied twenty-five percent to the number of units moving forward, and that's kind of how we, how we calculated those plus development utilization column. We use that, the development information. Um, so for example, if we have a hundred single-family units, a hundred single-family unit development outside of the university zone, um, we can apply point two-two, a point two-two yield to that. We're assuming that that development is going to yield twenty-two K through twelve students, or about probably ten or so elementary students. Something I really need to note, because there's been a lot of confusion about this, the diversity values for each option are not forecasted. Um, if we were to start forecasting the diversity metrics for each option, they would, it would turn into an extrapolation of an extrapolation, uh, which is not something that we really ever do. Um, it turns into a big assumption and it's not likely to come true. So the diversity values for all of the options are based on current data, but they've been updated to reflect each of the boundaries for each option. So if an area moves, the students are counted within the new boundary, but they are not forecasted to, for the next five years. Um, my apologies. Something else I want to note about this is we are updating this housing development information as new information comes in. Um, for example, we had a new development come in, I think, last weekend. Um, it was over Thanksgiving, and so that has been added. Um, unfortunately, that's hitting, that's also hitting the Summit area, that new one. So it's just another, just adding on to somebody who already is going to receive the most, uh, students from developments, but we are adding on to this as new information comes in. Um, we want to use the best information that we have available for this process.
Just one, um, to quote, we have a question about which, um, what was the new development that you just added?
Will you say that again? I'm, I have, I didn't hear the tail end of it.
We have a question related to what was the new, um, development that you added to the list?
I don't know the name of it. Um, if you go on the project website though, it's number fifty-eight on our, um, on our list. It's, I can show you where it is. I wonder if I can zoom into this. Yeah. So it's right down here near, um, gosh, what highway is this? Sixty-four. It's number fifty-eight right here. Uh, and I believe it's two hundred and sixty apartments.
Right.
Um, market rate apartments, but the more information, whoopsies, more information on that can be found on the project website. If you go to the resources section, there is just a document that is dedicated to housing developments and you can find it in there. So, oh, go ahead.
Is that, is the, is the new bellman apart?
So the next biggest question that we have been getting is about phasing. Um, and phasing kind of has two different buckets. We have phasing by geography and phasing by cohorts. Um, phasing by cohorts is the more typical phasing approach or exemption approach that we, that we use in any rezoning process. This allows entire, like an entire cohort or grade level to remain at their given school. So this would be something like saying, okay, all, current fourth grade students can remain at their, at their, um, elementary school for their last year of elementary school to avoid that additional transition. We also have phasing by geography. And this is, this involves moving targeted geographic areas over time. Um, and we would do this to avoid under or overutilization of schools as developments come online. Um, we know that the developments aren't going to come online all at once, which, which is actually a really great thing for us. Um, one of the reasons that we're doing this process this year is because we thought one of those developments that's going to hit Jackson Via, is, was going to come on next summer, so we needed to make changes. Because of the development, the change in the development timeline, we now have, we now have an additional year to implement boundaries, which, which is awesome. And we also know that developments, while we do have timelines for them today, things happen and we may not be able to follow the exact timeline. Um, so. The phasing, phasing in, especially with geography, will likely last anywhere from four to eight years. Um, and with that, it would be based on when these developments are supposed to be online, um, and not just completed construction. We're talking about developments being occupied as well. Um, so any student that would be required to change schools would only be moved once. So let's say your neighborhood gets moved, I don't know, from like Summit to Burnley Moran. Okay, you are locked in. Once you, once you move once, you will not move again as any part of this process. Um, that's not to say in the future, when another process happens, you would certainly not be locked in. But as a part of this process and this phasing, you would be locked in as soon as you move. So anybody, any student would only be expected to move once if they're being moved at all. Um, like I said, any phasing plan would likely last anywhere from four to eight years. This doesn't, that forty-eight years timeline does not include those fifth, the, or not fifth graders, but the cohort phasing that is just based on geography. Um, along with this, uh, the options presented are showing end states. So we've gotten a lot of confusion about how the options really work. What we're showing you right now is end state. So where we want to be maybe like five years down the road, once all of the phasing has been completed. Um, once we get, once we land on a recommendation, it will be much, much more efficient to figure out which areas need to move and when. But until we can get to that point, it's really difficult. Um, it's really difficult to have a phasing plan for every single boundary option that we create. Um, something else to note is that families that choose to participate in phasing would likely need to provide their own transportation to and from school each day. Uh, that is very standard. Um, many, many school districts and school divisions across the country are dealing with, uh, transportation issues right now. Bus drivers, they don't grow on trees. It's, everyone is having trouble finding drivers right now. Uh, and so we need to be sensitive to that and understand that if you're going to choose to, to participate in any sort of phasing, you will more than likely need to transport your child to and from school every day. Um, and some families will choose to do that and others, others may not, and that's okay. Um, something else I do want to talk about with phasing is that underutilization piece. So if we were to make all of these changes today, um, let's say we take one of the options and we make, we just rip the Band-Aid, everything for next school year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, everything happens. Because a lot of the developments will not be completed, especially in Summit Elementary, we really want to avoid having Summit sit at like fifty percent utilized until some of those developments come online, which is, which is another good reason to do the phasing by geography. That way, when we move students, when they need to be moved, we're not moving them ahead of time, just, just to get them out of the building. Um, we're hoping that this is going to be a much more accommodating approach for families as well, um, not by not moving everybody all at once. We may be able to move fewer students as, as a result of this. And that is all I have. Are there any other questions? I know we went through kind of a lot.
Make a comment. This is something Karen and I talked about this week about, I wanted to confirm with her, what, the way phasing would actually work, just from a nuts and bolts perspective, and I, I believe it would be, it would take on something like this, and Karen validated that this was the way it would work. Around December of every year, you know, we are, since about a year ago, I've been having quarterly meetings with Piedmont and CRHA and Indy, um, NDS actually have a monthly meeting with them now. But in December, we just have a concerted point where it's like, where are we with these developments? What's coming online? This coming summer and during the next school year, so about nine months out, getting very concrete, about what's coming online for occupancy of these developments that we're tracking. And then we've been knowing that in December, then in like January, we would be having conversations with the board. Okay, this next step of this phasing plan, based on what we know nine months out, this is where we are with the next moves, if you will, with the, with the bound, the next wave of boundary change implementations. And so then the board would see that in January, take action in February, and then everybody knows, the community knows this end vision of where we're going. But to tackle this issue of trying to sync up with the actual developments and not moving kids too soon, we need to do that reality check because we've already seen what we thought, what we originally been given as impacts from South First Street on Jackson Via that would be hitting next year. You know, as you get closer, we'll know it's actually not going to be till the following summer, so it won't impact until the next year, right? And that's what bought us some time, more time in this process. So, um, does that make sense to everyone about how this kind of drumbeat will work every year of knowing, what's really coming online nine months out and then saying, okay, we're ready to implement this next phase? Sorry.
I think it does. Maybe to Mr. Meyer's point yesterday, Thursday, um, about having someone on the planning commission, that is a member of the school board that is part of, these overall conversations before they're approved, before there's.
Well, even for new, even new.
To fully understand the implications to the school system, um, versus the catch-up that we, even when.
Yeah, proactive operation is always helpful.
So this panel and Karen, so to be clear, if I, it sounds like the suggestion is we use a geography-focused phasing approach, where we would know, where eventually the lines are going to be drawn, more or less. Families could understand that, but that we would not do it again, a day one, making all that, but again, phasing it based on when we expect these housing developments to come online and thus again easing our way into it. Okay. So families want to know exactly like, all right, eventually I, my, my two or three-year-old or four-year-old might be at the school or might start at the school, but, you know, you could decide to do that or not, or you can decide to start your, your kid in the school where eventually it would be phased also.
And that, that's where you migrate from that geography part of phasing into the cohort decision-making about what type of, practices we would allow for people to apply and then the, the provider.
Want to self-select him earlier, you can, but you have to, you have to get your child there.
Things like that. It, Karen, do you want to add? Because this is the part where my brain has been for a bit trying to figure out how this is going to actually look operationally in our work, in our continuing work with the board. Um, we will continue working with Wolfert for annual enrollment projections moving forward because of the uniqueness of our situation and with these boundaries, the linear regression model, he's going to be doing based on static boundaries and somewhat, no big changes in the housing development in the city up to this point. Those linear regression models are not going to work particularly for planning elementary staffing and so forth. So we're, because of the geolocation, tools and so forth that Wolfert brings, they will be assist, they're assisting us with, um, they'll be assisting us with, um, enrollment projections until things are more stable, um, because of the geolocation piece that they connect. Um, Karen, is there anything else you want to add on to that conversation we had this past week?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's really good to know. Like we're, we'll be around. Don't worry. We're, we're still going to track this for you. We're, it is not our practice to abandon you once we give you a plan. Um, we'll certainly make sure that everything gets implemented properly. Um, you do bring up an interesting point with the uh, early start conversation. So, and I think that's, that's important because we've heard that feedback from others. Um, there are some future CCS families that we've heard from that have said, well, if my child is going to be expected to move during their career, can I just start them at the next school? And I, I think that's absolutely wonderful feedback. Um, so with that cohort phasing, we're also considering early start as well, along with allowing people to stay instead. Um, and, and I just, I just wanna clarify, we are planning to come to you within the next couple of months with a recommendation that does have a roadmap for when each area will move. This will be more of making adjustments based on those timelines. So we're gonna use the information, like the best information we have today to inform when areas are gonna move. But every December, we're going to go back to the drawing board and say, okay, does it still make sense for this area to move this year? And if it doesn't, great, we can, we can let them be for another year. If it does, okay, then they already expected to move. Um, I, I do not foresee, well, typically developments don't go faster than they're expecting them to. Uh, they either go on time or late. So I don't think we're ever gonna run into a situation where something takes off faster than we thought it was going to. And we need to move students before that timeline. It'll be more like this area will move in twenty-six, twenty-seven uh, or twenty-seven, twenty-eight, one of those situations. Um, but we will be coming to you with that roadmap moving forward. We will know, should everything go exactly as we're planning, we'll know what's gonna move every single year. We just wanna make sure that we're adjusting annually, just in case.
Another piece that's important to me as we're getting this recommendation is paying attention to our fifth graders or the future fifth graders. Just spreading the position where we're tackling rezoning at the same time or doing the reinvigoration. And, and so just, like, I'm not going to be supportive of a plan that has our fifth graders move three times. Correct, but the goal is to have a stationary, that we need, I need a phasing that allows fifth graders to stay or have the option of staying um in that phased approach. And I imagine there's a sibling phasing conversation that but I appreciate that we can't get to phasing until we get to a recommendation of a map that has to come.
Yeah, and we'll be running all those scenarios for you. Like I, I know who are, I, I have everybody's address, so I know who, where the siblings exist. Um, and I'll be able to model that. Typically, what we find in any sort of phasing plan is allowing one, one grade to say, stay is not gonna make or break anything. Um, it has very little impact and quite honestly, we don't see as many families taking advantage of it that say they're going to take advantage of, or want to take advantage of it. Um, so it, it usually, it's usually just fine. Um, even siblings, it's usually, it's usually okay to do that. Once we start looking at like fourth and fifth, is, it's sometimes when we have issues, but we'll be able to model all of that with our recommendation. Um, and be able to tell, okay, what is our utilization at each school? And if it's, if it's gonna break one of the buildings, like if we're gonna be overutilized at a building because of phasing, that's, that's not where we wanna be. But if it's, if we're gonna be able to accommodate the students, great, but we, we love that.
Oh, just, you know the addresses of siblings who are enrolled in our schools now. We don't necessarily know younger non-school age students, but I guess it's gonna be such a small number, we'll be able to.
Chair, what, do you want us to ask further questions now? And/or provide observations and then have public comment or clarify questions, public comment?
I mean, she's at the end of the formal presentation, but you don't have all the, you know.
I have no questions. Going back to the, uh, the options again, just looking at the, some of the statistics associated with some of the options. And if I'm understanding correctly, these are a current set of options, but they might also evolve and, and modify. It's not like we're gonna get three or four or two, you know, but they could shift around based on the feedbacks, right?
Yeah, so typically what comes out of this, a process like this, is a combination of options. We'll try to take the best pieces of all of the options, um, especially the pieces that the community really likes. And mend those together into a final recommendation. Um, what we're hoping to do is take all that feedback and make sure we can incorporate as much of it as possible, as long as it doesn't go against the, um, the key considerations for rezoning and come to you with a recommendation. That's, it'll probably be pieces, parts and pieces of options put together. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, so looking at options three and four, for example, it seemed to be the most popular based on the survey. The low SES kind of percentages though, bring us to Summit having eighty percent of their students and often three and or seventy-eight percent of their students, four out of five basically students being SES at Summit.
Correct. Yes. And keep in mind, those are current numbers. Um, a lot of the, a lot of what we have had questions about is are those, are those assuming that those affordable housing units are completed and in there? No. So those numbers may be low, but given all of the developments within Summit, um, the majority of the developments are not considered affordable. So it could be, it could be a wash with the diversity metrics. That, that could be where we land. It may not be more or less, if that makes sense.
Alright, I'll just say that number is way too high for me at the moment.
Okay.
And this is based on my, my understanding that better academic results from a good mix of income levels associated with how much better is the other schools.
But I think that's the conversation that this board, we need to have that because that is the big tipping point is between these options are, you know, moving more students or achieving better balance in our schools. And I think like that is the conversation that we need to have. I appreciate this Johnson, how engaged you've been in this conversation since it directly impacts your school, our school, our students. Uh, but I think like we can't hide from this conversation because this is like this is the crux of it. I think we can alleviate a lot of the concerns and the feedback that we've received through phasing. Like we can accommodate specific families' concerns about their student moving or the younger sibling being able to continue through. We need to be having this conversation, I think, much, at a much higher level about what we want our schools to look like.
And incorporate. And I think, and I think one thing that I look off for, for the board as we, we pay off our conversations and, and I'm glad that you pointed out that that number is high. So, and none of these models, um, that we've been presented, um, so for example, when we were at Candlewood and we had a conversation about what would it look like as they begin to explain, explain what would it look like if that neighborhood was split between two schools? Um, because what keeps the numbers high right now is that, like, you know, it's uh, very dense, high saturated in a one area. One thing that's not on any of the maps right now is what's gonna happen in Tarleton. That's gonna triple and, that's gonna triple in size. It's going from sixty to one eighty. So what's not considered in these models right now is that conversation we had that day. What does it look like to um, divide that community half? And I know that we heard that it was not well received. However, we do know that by doing that, it does then reduce some of the, um, it does reduce that number of, the number of high, low SES in Summit. And then it moves part of it to another school. Um, and so, I mean, but people don't like that, but that's true. But what I hear is doing, saying this, that's the conversation that we have to have aloud. Um, because there are areas where we can do that. I mean, we talk, I mean, it currently happens at, you know, in the, um, uh, prospect area where the community is divided. And so maybe that's something that again, very important to consider here. So while it may not be popular by the people in the community, it's the decision that the people will have to take on their advisement because if not, you're essentially leaving things the exact same.
No, I, I think, I do, just have been so impressed with your engagement and your presence through this process. And I know you make comments at a lot of little individual, but, but I don't have to hear your voice, I don't need to pick on the pot. But I think it's important to be all here, with your thoughts, if you don't mind. You know, we have a lot of different lots, lots of sleep over this. Um, you know, we love all of this people. All of our families. Um, it can be done differently, you know, definitely first we want to test for and, you know, knowing that Summit has been in a pretty good condition, um, we are studying, studying SES rate, uh, currently. Um, and we, you know, if our gap roots, that we are in a pretty good condition, pretty good conditions, part of that works very hard. Um, not only for me, the academics students, but they were just as hard for me personally, of families and students. Um, sometimes you have to get into that later, get to the advocates. There are things that it has come to soul with, um, and, you know, to say, I've had a lot of conversations about that, but I mean, there he, and until those need their methods really hard to get to the academics. And sometimes the lack of repeating cycle, I know there's teachers that have been there for thirty-plus years and they have taught the parallels with grandparents of a lot of these students. And it seems like the same cycle outside of the schools in change in the community. And so there are things that these families think that the school can't provide. They can do definitely everything in our, in our college, um, for students and families, but there are things out of society that we just can't agree with. And sometimes it's like a battle. You know, as an educator, to see this. I've worked in different schools. I worked in Greenrider. I came to local city schools, lived here nineteen years ago. I started at Greenrider, I worked at Johnson, and you know, at that Summit. And so I've seen the diversity, I've seen, um, what, who's who's in this school, works with the students. And I can say that, you know, people love our kids, we love our kids. But what I'm saying, if we stay this way and we don't make these changes, I want to spend for these children. If that means we have to study for community, we're gonna have to do that. I want a balance of the SCS. I know each school has resources, except Summit does have one extra math special this year, but we have the resources at every school. We are rich, have a lot of resources. So if we can disperse our students to the, this feels like at our school, even right now, and just looking at the, uh, option three and four projection, if that, or if that happened and it, it, and just going to get apart. I feel like my staff may not stay. Um, you know, higher turnover last year for different reasons. There are some, you know, some people have to go. Um, but I do people talk. And, you know, people don't want to know that we are accredited with conditions, you know, we hear the, they're the only school. I hear that a lot. And it may, that, that upsets me a lot. But I know where it goes into making sure our students have what they need and what it takes to do that when you're at the end. You know, and so I want, if we have to do that, as much as I don't want to, we have to do that so that it is balanced. Um, I know there are some people who don't come to certain schools because they don't want to have to work with or do that extra work to get these children from where they are to where they need to be. And every child they're coming from, although I think that is not a struggling student, so I want to put that out there. These families love their children and parents do what they feel is right. So if that means coming to the school and busting at me or calling me about different things, then that's what they do because that's the way they show they love their kids. And so somebody, you know, it's one of our conversations, is not gonna be happy with whatever this decision. But I think a balance of the SES is going to be helpful. Um, so that because the resources are around the city, let's use all these resources. Um, but putting more pressure on these persons that are already there, pressure on admin to support teachers and build morale, there's a lot, a lot that is happening at. Um, I heard things about school business park when I was teaching at those. And a lot of those myths and things are not true. And so people hear Summit, and I know some people will opt into say, um, three and four because they don't want the kids in certain spaces. Okay, I'm just gonna keep it real. It's one thing about me. So what I feel is the truth. And then some parents in Candlewood would say, they don't come out to me, we advertise and I put it in parent square. We put stickers on the kids to go home, then you get a handful of people that come out because they feel people, they, they think the decision has already been made. They're gonna do what they want to do. They don't care what we think. And so that comes again from things in society that are brought into this. And so I don't know how to change people's perspective that, yes, what you say doesn't matter. We know you love your kids and in order for your voice to be heard, you have to come to the table. And so when we went to, um, Crompton, you know, there were more people, but that should have been a better turnout. Um, and so that stands me because people have experienced those, because what is happening in society in the past over many years, Charlottesville has a history, many of you know it. Um, but in order to change that, people have to come. And I don't know how to get that first to parents. Even getting parents to come to, uh, events at the school, I feel like this child is gonna be halfway across town. You can't even get within a point seven-five mile radius, even we send a bus, they still don't come. How are people gonna be part of that community? You know, the parents are sending them to spaces. And so all of these things play, play a part. And I feel, you know, as part of the transition for the children, you know, the siblings, the generation of family. I think people in the community, they may say, I want Summit Park church. They think my grandmother went there. And so there are generations of family. Um, and so, but change is part of the change that happened. And I want to invest in these resources with these children, for our staff. I want my staff to stay. It takes special people to work with different populations of children. And all these children are not bad. They are wonderful. They are sweet, you know, smart. They come to school happy. They want to be at school. They run into the building. They want to be here. They visit their teachers. They see what's happening. They, they, they just, they just love, and we want the best for them. So we spread, we spread them out. For everything that will happen, um, and the parents will, you know, come on board with that. But to keep them all in one space and it's gonna grow over time, and we're already in a space where a credit and a position and working parts, we can just stay on top of things, it doesn't look like it's going to be helpful, uh, in the, in the long. So this is some of my thoughts.
The, well, thank you. The options that we've seen haven't explored a split. Right, it's not an all or nothing.
It actually came up from the community feedback. That's how we got to that as an idea because we are, you know, we are listening to people.
And so, I guess, what is the stomach for that?
I think we hear the stomach for that. For me, there is nothing more powerful. I spent, shared my time with Summit with some other projects that I worked on and, uh, yes, all of those things. I think as elected officials, as educators, we are charged with making decisions. And taking all of the feedback, all of the concerns and all of the data science, what happens to say we need a balance to make so that every child gets the people opportunity to help us. All the reasons. And, uh, you know, those phases of those public stuff that experience is don't get conquered in, yes, but they are a piece of omega of the student body. And I think our children in that can have high EBS. And, um, when they're struggling to have a coat to get to school and our team does a tremendous job of getting them coats to get to school. We then help them learn and, and to divide them, we need to give them balance. Let's be sure after school, and those other communities are all over the world, all here. Um, and so just kind of thinking about that, how that's going to Um, and so just kind of thinking about that, how that's going to, um, when Southport three is free to go, when Walton is free to go. Um, when Kendallwood base two is free to go. How can you then start looking at ways that we shift those children to other areas and keeping what we have, um, kind of in place for now. Uh, but like, just kind of seeing what that goes like in the future, um, forward, um, so that we're not up. We're down with this, you know, coming from, um, a low income community, I lean a lot on folks in the community, like I have the words. So I know how important, um, the community family structure is. Um, and so sometimes when you do split communities like that and a child is going to this school, you need that community or hope or support. And so keeping those things, the man I was hoping to do with, um, but I would be, I would like to see our school very, very, um, diverse. And then just pushing, uh, all of our students in the school, um, and being the school. So I would also like to see, I think that again, it's important to do a good job of like elevating her worth. But I would like to see others, um, from other, as well, um, to hear what they have to say. Because I think that's important, right, we made the decision, so we're not put work. So I would like to see, what are some of the impacts, um, or, you know, uh, concerns of like the, um, the teachers. Um, or the principals admins at the school, um, because I think their voices are the most important.
Also. We, uh, we do have someone with us that I wanted to, um, prompt to share some information. We have Renee Devol, she's the person that I've been talking to about when I've talked about the change with the transportation coordinator coming on board. And one of the, one of the many benefits that she's brought to our school division are her experiences with rezoning, specifically in Albemarle County. And so she has some comments that I think would be really helpful for you, for y'all to just hear how some of these, um, issues of divided neighborhoods and phasing and siblings have, have been handled when, when other divisions have gone through this. So Renee, could you share?
Um, I've been rezoning Albemarle County for over twenty years. Every redistricting and they're all hard, period. Um, to the first point, geographically, it's smart to do this phasing. I remember, um, Biscuit Run, anybody remember that in the news, three thousand units, that's all coming off board. They did a county wide redistricting, they pulled the Band-Aid right off. Walton Middle School has suffered ever since, they do not have the students that they need. And now this street is going too big, the population to add them back in dwell, so they have this year after year of the school being underutilized. Yeah. As for, um, our students, our rising fifth graders, because we work pre K through fifth. Um, our fourth graders that were going to fit, rule of thumb was that they would stay with their siblings to finish out that year. Transportation was not provided except for once. When we, um, expanded Woodbrook Elementary, our urban ring are our most at risk kids. That's the dense of our population, we have them all throughout the county, that was a high dense population. So the school board decided that at that point in time, for that one year, the fourth graders that wanted to stay in fifth grade, because of being used to that school. The parents were used to that school, um, we did provide transportation for, um, students of rising fifth graders and their sibling for one year. Because. To that school, the ones that were redistricted to Woodbrook. Um, as for diversity, our urban ring was tough and we had to do that redistricting. And we did have to break apart some neighborhoods, we had to go into, um, Eaglewood. So if you look at Woodbrook, I mean, it kind of like snakes through everything, because we wanted the diversity, you need diversity. If we didn't do that, basically we would have made Agner Hurt a completely white school. Because of the way Agner Hurt was through our road and all that. So doing that and all the schools have the resources. It's like, at the end of the day, these kids will come back, these neighbors will still babysit these kids, you know. The bus stops, we tried to make them in the same area. So yeah, you might have to bring Johnny out at seven ten and Suzie will go right behind at seven twenty. You know, but that community stayed strong. Um, so, and we also have other communities that are split by buses. You know, it's not just, you know, schools, but by buses, um, Barracks West, we have two buses that roll through there and we would have to stagger on. So even then, the babysitters in there, the mamas of the neighborhood that took all the babies, you know, they would have to come out two times just for one school. Or just sit there and wait for the other bus. But the neighbors still stayed neighbors and the kids still had their babysitters.
And Renee, talk a little bit more about the sibling piece, we talked about that earlier this week, but how, exactly what the standard policy was for siblings and managing these transitions?
Basically, they, they went that one year school, um, with the, um, rising, um, fifth grader. And then after that, they'd go to their base school.
So it was a one, so for siblings, to be clear, it was a one year, it, you know, the, the priority was to preserve the, the rising fifth grader.
Well, not that not splitting the parent.
Right, and not to split the parent, right. And so then, but this, just like you had, say, a first grader with a rising fifth grader, the first grader would stay for second grade, but then the family would understand that then for third, that then the, the change would be happening. And then that leads into a question of depending on what the board wants to do with out of zone applications, whether you want to, the policy now is that it's only for childcare reasons that we entertain. Um, out of zone applications and, um, you know, expanding that could be Pandora's box or not, um, but those are other things to consider. Thank you, Renee. I'm glad you all finally got to meet her because I think I've talked about her for a while often on it for meetings. This is Renee Paul.
Y'all have any more questions about redistributing, zoning, things that I've been through? Because we've, we've been beating number of the Albemarle County for ten, four years.
Then, it doesn't necessarily have to include more busing or we won't necessarily, again, if you phase it some way strategically, you don't need more busing and buses and bus drivers.
In a sense, no. Um, when we did redistricting for Albemarle County, basically if a hundred students was going to go from Brownsville to Crozei, those buses would follow from those neighborhoods. And we didn't have a large walking, um, that would impact the buses. So that's something that we would have to consider, but the areas that you're looking at, you're not talking about a hundred kids per area. So.
Wouldn't it be possible with like the next iteration to see that, what the impact of busing, bus drivers.
That's a, that's a really good question and point, I think we could do some of that with, Renee's part of that, um, staff work with, along with Dr. Johnson, myself, Pat Fomo, because of all the data in this, in this process. Um, Karen, what they're asking is like, when we, as we move into this, the final recommendation, showing what the projected impact with Renee's involvement, we can kind of project the additional need for buses slash drivers. Because to the extent we're reducing walkability, there will be.
Right, but the thing about it, you're looking at citywide walkability, so if you're, if you're reducing walkability by a hundred students citywide, that's.
That's gonna, it could blend out with existing buses.
Right.
Yeah.
And it, it might not cause such a hardship and plus, not only that, are we, depending on which one you go, Summit might become pure walkability, so we gain a bus.
Yes, there's one bus now serving the outer areas.
So, yeah, it, it all depends on how, I mean, we can look at the numbers and look where the numbers are higher than the other.
But to answer the question with the, with the recommendation, absolutely, and the answer, maybe there's no change, but yeah, good question.
Yeah, it may not be perfect, but we can certainly estimate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I don't, I don't have any questions, I, I think I'm just thinking. Split of Summit a little bit, uh, I think my initial was, great, we can put Greenstone back together and keep Summit. Because, you know, I know that there were some concerns in terms of, uh, rural population at Summit with the new development as well. Um, so I think that's just something I consider.
So a couple of questions.
I actually have a question for the board, just before this, uh, committee comes together again in mid-January to consider all this feedback. I, I think it would be helpful for that committee to know, does the board have the stomach to consider moving all of Kendallwood to Burnley Moran? I think that's a question that's gonna come up for that committee.
I mean, that's option two, right?
There's, there's two options.
One and two, yeah.
One and two, there's Kendallwood.
And then don't want it to move all of the prospect to Johnson as well? I think that's a change.
I think one is Johnson maybe and one is Jackson Villa, but both combined mine, right?
Yeah, I believe.
So that keeps the respective communities together. Who's more students, but if SES is our. Something, one moves it to Johnson, two moves it to Jackson Villa.
And keep in mind, moving students is not one of the key considerations for rezoning. That is a lot of the feedback that we're getting, but it's not, that is not one of the considerations, the main considerations.
A, a couple of questions that I had, and I don't know if they're even, would impact anything, but just in looking at, uh. Or reflecting back, we just had a board meeting two days ago, I don't know what that is. Um, but anticipating the increase in the students with special education needs and how that's gonna play out at the kindergarten level. And I mean, I don't know if we have data that shows where those, those students are gonna land or which schools they would, would go to, but just. Again, maybe I'm looking, uh, too much into the weeds, but just looking at programming differences too, as far as, will any of these changes affect, um. I mean, we have the, the teach program, right, at Burnley Moran and Summit, is that correct?
So for LEAP, um.
Jackson Villa.
Well, Jackson Villa is currently housing the LEAP classrooms for the elementary level, but that will, like, just.
As, um, I think as former special education director, I think Rachel was saying the exact same thing, she was sitting here, just supports follow the students. So if they are, um, so she was talking about, um, the students that are four year, that are four year olds right now, who will, uh. Who will go to kindergarten requiring special education services, um, if there are some like one to one services or if there's, whatever those specially designed services look like. She's prepared for them, um, and right, she's prepared for those services to follow the students. I mean, and we've had this, and this conversation comes up a lot even during reconfiguration, because even with projecting special education teacher support needs, we're gonna have to do that closer to. Uh, when we reconfigure, because right now, um, the special education numbers are a little bit, um, students are identified, do we get, do this exit, so.
Right, and I guess I was thinking, um, more about students who, any of the current self-contained classrooms, you know, even the Walker program, right? So I don't know, we have what grades at Walker as far as in that self-contained class.
It's middle, middle school is with, um, the Walker students, the, the LEAP program for the middle years, which would be Walker, MBF is currently housed at Walker. But when you think about LEAP, those are almost like sort of treated like magnet programs where the students are, are bused to where the program is that they need. And in the, and really where that comes into play in this, so zoning is actually sort of irrelevant for LEAP. It really is because those kids are gonna get to where we're having that program that, that addresses those needs. And then, but what is relevant about LEAP is, um, we checked in with Rachel Raznick and we are anticipating needing to add classrooms, classrooms for LEAP. And that is factored into the capacity that we allow for at the schools, because we believe we will have it at, um, and I'll say, because the books are rare, likely Greenwire and Jackson Villa. So there, there is an expansion for LEAP baked into this process. But the actual zoning isn't relevant because they're gonna be, just like they're bused now from all over the city to Jackson Villa for the elementary level LEAP program, that will continue, but we did account for it in the capacity.
And so the middle school will go to the middle school?
No, oh, yeah, yeah, that, that space is a great space, um, that's, that's been designed at, at D-Ford, it's really awesome.
So those students necessarily won't, won't impact the rezoning of the elementary schools?
The, the key around that level of need and those programs is having the space and, and making sure that that's carved out of the capacity. When we assess like the capacity for Jackson Villa, the capacity for Greenwood, because those are carved out just like an art room, just like, um, your STEM room, you know, we didn't count those as classroom, regular classrooms.
And then the other question I had was outside, so our out of district students, so outside of our employees and city employees that bring kids in. Are the numbers negligible as far as if we were to change the policy or take those numbers out of the schools, would it impact enough? To make a difference or not really?
Your, your number was small, I mean, most of the, most of the out of district are employees' children.
Right, and so that is, when you consider, especially at the elementary level, it's mostly our employee children. And we always still, even with employees, it's managed on a space availability basis. Once they're our student, though, we do treat them as our student as long as the student's in good standing under the policy, and that's true for tuition paying families as well. But, um, we don't, we certainly don't contemplate or anticipate allowing an increase for it. It, I think it's a bigger discussion if there would be a change, particularly with the employee piece, because that's where most of the students are coming from. It's that ability for staff to bring their kids with them into the city when they come to the large vacancies, so.
And I think, if I remember correctly, that happens mostly in a elementary age and then, and then do they go to their.
Our staff students, a lot of them track all the way through, a lot of our staff students track all the way through.
So we didn't answer Beth's question, um, and I, you know, I would be interested if we can solicit feedback from the community about specifically. We have to do something, do you, like, do you want the whole community move to Burnley Moran or would you prefer a split?
Well, that's permanent, I mean, the whole move is an option.
Correct, but.
There's options to.
But I, we haven't, they're also given the option to stay, right, in green door, and so I think something specifically.
What are our priorities?
Soliciting feedback, you know, if our priority is a balance of SES, we know that it's this specific community. What is the preference? Is that possible?
So you, um, I think we've heard clearly from the community, they'd rather stay at Summit, they'd rather not be split. So I guess what your question, what you're saying is, look, at least half of you are probably gonna go to Burnley Moran. Would you rather have all of you go to Burnley Moran so that you can stay together? Okay, I think that's possible.
Is that the right question?
I think so, right, you're saying, yeah. Giving that community that specific option, say, one way or the other, someone's gonna move, either you move together or we switch you up, right?
If we're prioritizing.
If that's what we're.
Yes, and college, that's, I mean, I would get, my, my sense on this is, or my perspective on this is, again, I want socioeconomic diversity in our schools. So I think that's gonna ensure all of our kids get the best opportunity for educational achievement. So to me, something like number two, that is modified, whether again, is giving us that diversity, not only on the SES, but on ELL and SED and using another application. So something like that is what I would like to see, and that's what I would be suggesting to the committee to consider, personal.
And that's the one where we've already heard community.
Right, now, I've seen community feedback, that, again, but skewed very towards from Burnley Moran folks who I know organize around this and understand why. And three and fours are preference, but that does not get us, you know, again, to the data of the diversity, at least that I'm looking at, in our schools. So, I mean, I would, again, my argument, or at least my personal preference on this is something like number two. I'm happy to give the Kendallwood folks, like, get them more feedback on whether they prefer to be split or, uh, move all of Burnley Moran, and what does that look like? I guess it's number two, but, uh, I think we should be sending a, a signal that we want a diverse set of schools, elementary schools. So to.
I mean, I'd love to see, I guess, the math, though, I mean, with a split. I mean, can you tease that, can you tease that out?
Yeah, I mean, Karen.
Yeah.
We can certainly explore that, I, I don't think I can create it right now, it'll take some time for me to put together. Um, but I, I think it's, it's worth exploring, when we get to the next committee meeting, I am planning to bring, I'm gonna go through all of the results and bring kind of those modifications to the committee that we can. Uh, that we can make and have them go through that. Um, so that, that is gonna be something that we're gonna talk about, probably at, at great length, is splitting versus not splitting, especially with the Kendallwood community.
So, this is a question just posted there, my, my subject is, for Trailblazer, the reason why we're not seeing a lot of change. The reason why we're not seeing a lot of change for these kids moving around. For them is because there's not that much development up in the north and west side because of all the single family housing that's there.
Exactly, the other thing with Trailblazer that I, that I think is important is because that, that boundary currently kind of like. There's that peninsula, well, there's kind of like two little peninsulas, it's in the university zone, we know that those, the developments pointed. At the university will not yield nearly as many students as some of these other developments will. So it's, they're not going to experience the same level of growth as the other ones, you're exactly right.
And I'll just say is, when I'm going to be acting in the public, and when I, I have been getting a lot of feedback from this, but what I want to hear from the public is their priorities at these higher levels, not. How necessarily impacts their family, what is your priority for diversity, ELLs, SED, et ceteras? This is my personal request to take this issue once.
And we've kind of been echoing the same thing, at all the community meetings, I told folks, it is not helpful for me to get feedback that says, don't move my kid. It, it is feedback, I totally understand, I get it, you don't want to move, but that, we can't do anything with that. If, if you're going to take the survey, awesome, just be sure in your, in the comments to kind of. To make your argument something else, not just don't move my child, or don't move my child. Give me something that I can work with to make that accommodation, because if, if all I hear is don't move my kid over and over, somebody has to move. That's just the unfortunate part about rezoning, we're going to be overutilized if we don't make any changes at Summit, so. We, I really want to hear comments, probably more related to those key considerations to rezoning more so than, don't move me, don't move me, don't move me.
So I think at this point, we've got a couple of questions that have come in online, and we will open it up, public comment for anybody here as well. But I'm going to go ahead and read these, so the first one is, can you speak to why Trailblazer? Has the smallest impact in number of students despite having a greater capacity? And some schools more affected, in no scenario does Trailblazer have more than thirty five students affected, maybe we just address that, right? The next one is, speaking as a BME parent. We have not been given an option of absorbing students from Summit or any part of the city without. Moving students out of BME, I believe BME is so far below capacity that it can just absorb. All or part of Kendallwood without moving students out of Burnley Moran. Is that accurate?
I, I think, my, my suspicion is that that would leave Greenbrier really below.
Yes, yes. Greenbrier is currently utilized at fifty one percent, so unless we're going to take an island from Summit and put it at Greenbrier. Burnley Moran or Trailblazer would be our really two main options to put more students into Greenbrier and not leave them underutilized.
Right, and I think you said it in several of the meetings for whoever this parent is that's asking this question. But I mean, everybody, that has to shift, nor, nor is where their, where the availability.
Exactly.
How will survey feedback be analyzed, what tools will be used to analyze written responses?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay, I didn't know if we were like, if we were responding or not. Sure, so, once we get all of the feedback, and we've already started doing this on some of the feedback that we've gotten already. The first thing that we do is plot it on the map. So if you remember that slide I showed you with all the dots, it was next to the density slide. We will be looking at that and looking at comments. Neighborhood by neighborhood. What we typically do is, once we plot, we'll kind of see who will, will color the dots based on. Level of approval, and then kind of go from there, we'll zoom into each area, if an area really likes an option, we'll figure out why, if they really hate an option, we will figure out why. The question, what tools will be used to analyze written responses? I, I, we'll be reading every single one of them and kind of summarizing them from there, so I guess. I, I guess my brain is the answer there, I, I don't have a better response for that. But we will be using the data probably primarily geographically to inform the recommendation. Along with that, we'll have, we'll have the whole report on the project website, once it's available, for folks to also do their, do a review if you're interested.
Yeah, for folks to review and then coming to the board as well, so comments go into.
A vacuum.
Cloud.
Exactly.
All of the comments are published, and the only thing that is redacted is if it's got personal information or.
Or cuss words.
Or cuss words, yeah.
If there's something especially nasty, I might, I might pull it out, especially if it's like pointed at an individual. But other than that, it'll be exactly what your community said.
So in other words, the community will be able to assess that the comments were reflected in the, in the work, right?
And they'll be organized by option, too.
I don't know if this is a question, but I'll read it. Summit is walking distance from the community that's being considered for splitting. It makes for a great sense of community of Belmont. Sixth Street. Slash Garrett, not sure splitting is a good idea. Burnley Moran is a great school, but not walkable for any parts of Belmont, that's Sixth, Sixth Street slash Garrett area. So again, transportation.
Good feedback.
And some of the families that we heard from when we visited Kendallwood did say, if you provide a bus, bus service for us, we're, we're fine, but they. One of the things we were curious about is how many, if any, families would say they would prefer bus service. And with that, you know, that would be a reason they would want to perhaps go over to Burnley Moran, but. We didn't get like any kind of overwhelming sense that. That, that having bus service would be a, a big plus for them, but I think a lot of folks would view it as a. As a plus in the context of other things, though, that they would be losing from, from not no longer being at their neighborhood school.
Can we speak, or can someone speak, Kendall, Dr. Gerle, can you speak about the current? Walking, I don't know something for changing at, at Kendallwood in terms of walking bus or partnership with. City of Promise.
No, Kendallwood, they, Kendallwood, they walk, Ms. Johnson's staff walks with them every day.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's no partnership that City of Promise with Kendallwood.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
But I think to Ms. Johnson, to, to your point earlier. Participation is generally low, whether you offer a bus and they come, or whether they walk. It fluctuates.
I mean, I think we've done a better job with our attendants, reaching out to them, about attendances in general. Getting more communication out, seeing increases for one more viewing, things coming out, so I think it's a work in progress, but still.
I think one of the things that I'm considering, and this might be too, too long term, but I definitely think it's something. If it's behind those, it could be an issue later on, as we're looking at our schools aging. And if we, the community generally speaking, for the last at least two decades or so. Have been very interested in keeping their neighborhood schools, and then if we take this pocket and say. You can be a neighborhood, but then you're not going to your neighborhood school, but what that, what that looks like in the future and at that concept is what I'm considering. That's assuming we keep that neighborhood school, I'll catch your comment.
All right, we're going to open it up for public comment for those of you who've joined us, so and then we'll get any good questions and comments. So anybody here? Would you like to make comments?
Sure.
Do you want to come up to the table and say something?
Thanks.
I just say your name.
Yeah, hi, everybody, my name is Beth Schuler, I, my address. I'm at two four oh six Jefferson Park Avenue in Bryce Springs, so I am a. Parent of a current kindergartner at Johnson Elementary. And so I, you know, come to this with a lot of humility and heart, because I'm kind of new to the school system, but invested, right? And I also, you know, professionally, I'm a researcher, and I study K twelve education policy, so kind of coming at this with, with that background as well.
Thank you very, you know.
Yeah, so thank you guys for, you know, I've had a really a lot of thoughtful engagement with folks that way, I just really appreciate. Your time and just the thought you're putting into this, I appreciate Karen's time, she's been really responsive and quick, you know, with, with requests and that kind of thing. So, you know, and, and so I think a lot of what I'll say is like consistent with a lot of the thinking, I think is already occurring, so apologies for, you know, but just to, you know, kind of reiterate and lend support. To your thinking. You know, as a researcher, I think, I think about, I come at these issues from the perspective of trying to sort of. Maximize student learning, student academic achievement and learning, and equity of student outcomes and student learning outcomes. And so, you know, I think from that perspective, to me, the, the idea of. You know, balancing demographics across schools. Would be beneficial from, from that perspective of kind of maximizing student learning, I think that concentrating, you know, the research is pretty clear that concentrating. Disadvantage in any one given school, you know, just creates a lot of challenges for, you know, as, as it's already been explained, right? For, for schools in serving students now, I'm less aware of the sort of nitty gritty of the issues of sort of splitting communities and. You know, I think all of that should be weighed against kind of student learning, but, but I think student learning should be one of the criteria that we're thinking about when making decisions, right? So, and then I think, you know, one of the challenges that, you know, you've already sort of put the, I think, nail on the head, right, is that there's. The, the plans that would do the most for balance, right, are also the plans that. You know, without a sort of phased in approach would, you know, require the most kind of forced involuntary transfers across school, and so I'm really. Glad to hear you all thinking about options for, for phasing in, because I think, you know, it's not just. You know, I think a lot of the, that conversation has been around sort of the inconvenience for families and parents, but. I think it's not just the inconvenience, right, it is a matter of, of student learning, because those forced transfers create real disruptions. And I think there's not like a perfect research literature that speaks to this, but we have work on, you know, movements across schools. Grade configuration, school closures and, and reconfigurations. And also some from sort of historical integration plans that sort of. Is that we suggest it, and then it's perfect to our situation, but I think it's suggestive that, you know, forced movement is, is disruptive, right? And we've had a lot of disruption in recent years with COVID and all of that, so, you know. So I think that should be something that's kind of weighed here. And so, you know, I think one way to sort of overcome this tension of like. You know, between balancing and minimizing forced movement would be some sort of phased in approach, it sounds like you guys are taking a lot of thought to how to do that. Most effectively to kind of minimize those, those transfers, and I just, I think that. You know, my, my suspicion is that a lot of the public resistance to. The, the, the approaches that would increase balance are coming from a place of, you know, that, because people are not. They're assuming there's no phase. So I think.
Yes, that's our timer, I'm sorry.
So I just had a. So anyway, I just think that the public feedback to date may sort of understate the support for balancing because. Folks have been giving it under the assumption that, you know, it would require all this movement, and so. I think if, if people actually were here this morning and could hear that there, you know, there is a lot of consideration of how to do this kind of thoughtfully and. You know, in an order of operations that would sort of minimize disruption, that there, there would be potentially more support from that, from the communities that are, you know, making the most noise. And that kind of thing, so, anyway, I'm just grateful to be here, grateful to, you know, I'm. Still learning more and updating my views on all of this, and I know there's a lot to weigh, but, and if there's ways that I can be helpful, you know, with the process.
I can pull the doc up.
And for the purposes of this process, I do want to mention that Dr. Johnson and I. I have an upcoming meeting to talk about Kendallwood, because I know we're. In the, in our current conversations, we're talking about SES, but we also have to keep in mind that there's a phase of this that we. Don't quite understand, because it's also going to be mixed anger. So we're, we, we are, some of the conversations, we're talking under the assumption that it's all going to be. Low SES, but we, we have an upcoming meeting, just to get an idea of what the phasing of the different income models. Will look like, so then that will also give us a better understanding of. Just, you know, what the implications are for our schools.
We can answer this one question really quickly, does utilization, look at utilization by grade level, no? Because within us, within our schools currently, classrooms aren't hard and fast tied to a particular grade. It all depends on the cohorts as they move through, so sometimes you'll have a small cohort. And you'll have two or three classrooms for that grade level, but then you'll have big cohorts go through, which generally go around four classrooms for that cohort. Our norm is three classrooms per, per grade level in any given school. But it, we have the ability and we have to fluctuate that year to year based on how the cohort sizes change. So utilization is at the building level, not the grade level.
And then the next comment is, I'm still a little confused about the process moving forward after the recommendation and the public hearing, is there any room for further modification? An additional opportunity for feedback from the community, I would say yes, but frankly, if I'm wrong.
You are exactly right, this is a very iterative process, where we started off with a whole series of options, we narrowed it down to four, we'll then narrow that down to one recommendation with the committee. When we bring that recommendation to the public hearing, what we're looking for is the community to provide feedback, and then the board will be able to say, okay. Based on this feedback we got from the public hearing, what happens if we move this piece? Or not, don't move this piece, what, what does the utilization look like, so most definitely, there is still room for improvements. Beyond the recommendation being announced, we, at that point, we would just be relying on the board to provide those modifications. The committee, after the second committee meeting, we are, we will be completed with the committee, it's on the board at that point, to tell us what modifications they'd like to see.
So, but process wise, we would have one more monthly meetings, we would have a public hearing at that monthly meeting.
Not necessarily every separate.
It's January twenty second.
January twenty second, and then two weeks later, we're going to basically vote for more with the action meeting.
Two, two weeks later, the board would begin discussions.
Okay.
And then the board can set the timeline for the vote.
And at any point in time, if we feel like we need more time or we want more information, that's, that is within our.
I just would like to, I just would like to make sure that everything you want us to consider. Because I think what happens when we do do that, especially, I think what happens when we do do that is we give people a lot of heartworth. So when we bring it to you, I want to make sure that we're heading towards the, the conclusion of this process, so like everything you need. Like, let's go ahead and give it to Karen, let's give it to Walker, and let's consider it, I, I think there are a lot of things that we've added to our list today that are all great things for consideration. Make sure that we, we've done all the public engagement, and, and as we told the community, it is a very fluid process, we keep pushing it out. I think once we hand it off to you all, you know, it's almost like, you know, this is everything you asked. And, you know, they'll put it before you, and, and, you know, then we can hopefully be that, like, some first read of it, because if not, people then lose, they get. They lose interest in our process and they look and think that we've done the right thing.
So, we want to influence the recommendation that the committee brings to us in January, we need to say something right now.
Or follow up with myself or Nicole, et cetera, to, who are a part of that community.
And plus, we will have the community, and plus, we will have that community as the, the community for, with the public hearing. Where you can come and testify of what you, what you like and don't like, I mean, that's what it is. It is, you can, you can bring your, like, these are all the, this is all the research I've done, and it's. I hate it, I don't like it, I love it, but yes, but we give it to you all, I would just like for us to be at the place where people don't lose faith in our process. Because we want to then push it out in the public.
So that will be the opportunity to, to show up in person, or they can email statements ahead of time. And all of that will be archived for board, board review, correct?
Yeah, they can record videos, they can record audio, they can, I want to give it to you, they can, they can do.
I want it all, because.
Fun videos will be more highly considered. I'm just kidding. I'm totally kidding, but I would love to see some.
So, I mean, I, I really, what's important for me is I want to see, um, and I want to clearly understand all of the phases that might be proposed. I want to acknowledge at least verbally right now because I was at the meeting. Um, you know, there, there are concerns and there are groups, you know, of parents who feel like it's a done deal, you know, and, and um, but also the fact that that specific neighborhood is going, is potentially, you know, slated to go through a lot and a lot of change. So I want to acknowledge those types of things. And if that's going to be phased, I mean, that's, that's what I need to understand a little bit better. For me personally, I don't know. This is a question for you all. You know, just if there are any financial implications or budgetary implications of doing this. And then I know the staffing is up to you all and, and you guys will take care of that, but again, me and my heart, you know, wanting to make sure that you're okay and your staff's okay and the staff at other schools are okay. And, um, I don't know. I know that's not part of your presentation probably Karen, but I'm just speaking my own thoughts.
And, and that part that, and we keep hearing that part, and I'm glad Ms. Johnson said that today, the part about people feel like it's a done deal. It's, you know, it's societal, it's what has happened to marginalized people. And I think that one thing that we can continue to, I've said this about every process that we had, including one Thursday, that, I mean, we continue to work transparently and, I mean, and that's how we gain people's trust. And we've not done anything without engaging people and considering their voices and being very transparent about what we've done. And this, I think, is an, is an amazing process because we continue to pivot based on what we hear from people. We add based on what we hear from people and take away based on what we hear from people. Uh, and so hopefully that's how we gain their trust. But they have said that in every community that has had something happen to them historically. And I think I would expect.
Well, I think to your point, I mean, you said it, historic, what Charlottesville has done to this community. Where we're, you know, this is where we're at, where we've landed right now. As far as development, where, where we can develop are the communities where, where history was, was the hardest on, on, you know, these parts of our city. And so we, I mean, I, we, um, are committed to trying to let's, let's us do better, you know, and then take care of each other. And, um, it's tough when, you know, there's no major development going on in, in the Greenbrier areas. You know, or other areas that, that might spread affordability a little bit different.
So essentially, I'm going to, we're going to get a, a recommendation. It's not going to be options coming to us in January.
It's a, a recommendation with, with fate, with a recommended phase.
Okay. And it's going to come in as my other thing is that we are going to get a phase plan. An amazing plan also, not with options, but an amazing plan also that we can say, this is exactly what we like or not. I think it's just hard having options.
Right.
And I don't want to have more options in the future. I want to have a plan that we can react to and be very concrete.
The recommendation will.
I, I, and I was wondering, I didn't say this before, but I would really like to see that phasing in a thought out way. I think the geography and, and mixing in the cohort kind of things, that makes sense to me.
And the only reason that I brought up that mechanics part is because of like what Renee shared about the biscuit run, right? And that experience in the county. I do think we want to have a phase, we want to be clear about the end game. We want to be clear about the planned phasing. But I think we also, because construction is what it is, and we just have to be mindful that we're going to need to double check our work every year and then be very transparent. And we'll have at least around, you know, over six months, nine months of where we're announcing anything we're seeing that's, that's changed from what our plans are based on in this moment.
So I also heard in some of your sessions, Karen, and, you know, individual families ask about, you know, just very specific requests, you know, like, and, and you wanting to hear those specifics again, not just the, I don't want my student moved, but if there's a compelling reason. I'm, I mean, I'm supportive of that and I'm going to trust that you all in the committee are going to look at that and allow those things to happen if it's appropriate for whatever that is. So if, if a family were, I don't know, um, I can't even remember some of the.
Let's say we like, we left one parcel out of a whole neighborhood out. Like we send them to Jackson Villa, but the rest of the neighborhood to Johnson. Um, that was kind of what I, what I was hearing from some of those families. Like, why did you include this part of the neighborhood? It's because I didn't realize that was in the neighborhood. So great. Let's, let's make that move. Um, I, I heard a lot of like one offs from families.
Too, and like we've got to have a single plan for people then to be able to provide that level of specific feedback.
But everyone will be happy at the end of the, that's, that the goal is student outcomes.
Rest assured, you will stop hearing about it. Uh, once the process is over. I, I know it's kind of tumultuous right now, but you will. People, people will move on from this. So it's probably pretty hot and heavy right now, but once, once we get through this, it'll, things will calm down in terms of rezoning.
And, and Karen, I, more specifically than just people will move on, you've reported that people are happy. In a year or two, people are happy.
And, and you know, I think a lot of that is probably going to be credit to how great all of your schools are. Um, people, what I have noticed are people, people are fiercely passionate about their schools. It does not matter which school you are talking about. People do not want to leave their school and like, gosh, what a, it's like kind of a great problem to have. People love their elementary schools and typically what I see is people fall in love with their new elementary school as well and they, they're really embraced by that community. Um, some things that I, that I know have worked well in other divisions are like open houses. So maybe each school over the summer can have an open house for the students that are, or like an ice cream social or something that are moving to that school so that they can be welcomed by that community and the staff there. Um, we've seen things like that work really well. Maybe field trips where you're taking all of the students who are going to be moving to one school and seeing what it looks like at the other school during the school day. Um, so kind of those like welcoming events are really, really have been positive for other divisions.
If I can take you back on that really quickly, during the V S B A conference, I went to a session, um, with Furtisburg, they were presenting, and it's a little bit of a different conversation. They were closing two elementary schools. Um, it was actually the field trips that actually really helped their community by having those students and the teachers that were transferred from the closer, from the schools that were closing. So actually do a field trip during the day so they can see what that process looks like for that school and how they were long. That, that really. How far out? Um, I think they did March, April or so. So we're talking about towards the end of the school year. We're still enough time to have additional questions.
Any other questions? So remember all of us in the day, Julie or Mr. Richardson or Karen or whoever, who have any questions or ask about thoughts of. All right. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yes.
Yeah. I do want to say thank you for allowing me to be a part of this working conversation. I'm going to depart.